I'd like to call the Dallas City Council meeting to order for Monday, October 21st at 7:00 PM. First thing on the agenda is a rule call, please.
Council President Schilling?
Here.
Council Adams?
Here.
Here.
Council Briggs?
Here.
Council Fitzgerald?
Yeah.
Council Jantz?
Here.
Council Shane?
Here.
Councils Collins and Verden are excused.
Thank you. Please join me in the ledgers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next is introductions, recognitions, and proclamations.
We don't have any introductions.
Okay, tonight.
Nope.
Public hearing, next on the agenda. First public hearing is, at this time is set for a land use public hearing on application for an annexation and zone change of property on Southwest Cherry at 11th Avenue. I will now open the hearing at 7:01. Are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to declare? This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We will begin with a staff report followed by questions from the council of staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant and/or applicant's representative for a total of 15 minutes. This may be followed by questions of them from the city council. Thereafter, we will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the city council. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. Comments submitted by phone will be taken in after in-person comments have been completed. If you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in their staff report or any criteria that you believe should be applicable. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all the testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the city council to deliberate and ask if there is any motion or in response to this proposal. So first thing, will the staff please present their report?
This is my first time with the new microphone, so I guess if the light is on, that means it's working.
It's a problem.
Voice activated.
Okay, voice activated. Don't touch it, got it.
It'll blow up.
Chase Willough, city planner. So this first request that we'll be having hearing on tonight, request for annexation and zone change. It's one-third of an acre property located in the residential zone. As mentioned, it's Cherry and 11th Avenue there in the southwest part of town. Zooming into the vicinity photo there, we can see that it's an undeveloped parcel of land surrounded on several sides by other city development. For annexations, there's six approval criteria. The site has to be within the urban growth boundary. The proposed zoning has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The site has to be contiguous to the existing city limits. Public facilities, that's the sewers, the streets, the water mains, have to have adequate capacity to support development of the site. And the annexation has to be consistent with the annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. The written staff report goes into some greater detail on that, but suffice it to say, it's within the urban growth boundary, it's contiguous to the city limits, can support development of the site, and so forth. Zone change is additional five approval criteria. Because the property is currently outside of city limits, it currently has a Polk County zoning designation, so as part of the annexation into the city, it would need to be reasoned to have a city designation. And so the approval criteria for zone changes, the request has to be consistent with the statewide planning goals, consistent with the comprehensive plan. Public facilities have to have capacity to support development. The change has to be in the public interest. It has to conform to the transportation planning rule under state law. Written staff report goes into greater detail as to how each of those individual criteria is satisfied. And are recommending that the application be approved. We see the zoning map here. Property in question has the red crescent there on it, and so that's the property they're looking at. And as you can see, it's surrounded by the existing RL zone, and so rezoning that property, have RL zoning consistent with the surrounding properties is the logical zoning to apply to that property as part of the rezoning. For RL zone allows four fine dwellings per net acre, net after subtracting ride away such as streets. So that was sort of the short and sweet staff report that I've got for you. If you have questions of staff, certainly happy to answer them.
We'll do that later. Okay, we will now hear from the applicant. As a reminder, you have 15 minutes to present. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jed Bennett with Steve Bennett Construction, Congressional Court, Southeastern Salem. Really don't have a whole lot more to add. This is the third time we've annexed a property in this area, and we've built homes consistent with the RL zone. That would be our plan for this piece of property as well, once it's annexed. So I guess if there's any questions I can answer, happy to do so.
Does the city council have any questions of the applicant? Guess not.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jed. Public testimony will now be allowed. Please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to testify, and we will alert you when you have 30 seconds remaining. At the five-minute mark, your testimony will end. As a reminder, if you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in their staff report or any criteria that you believe should be applicable. Is there anybody who wants to speak? Is there anybody waiting on the phone?
No.
Okay. We will now allow the applicant five minutes for rebuttal, and you have no rebuttal, so... Do any members of the council have any additional questions about the matter for the staff?
I've got a question in regards to the recommended motion. I want to verify, there looks like there's two here. One on page five. And one on page...
It's 19.
19.
Hello, the next one.
Page 19 is the one from the Planning Commission's... That was the Planning Commission staff report. So that's just the recommended motion from the Planning Commission staff, from that meeting, staff report.
Okay, so we're looking for the motion?
The motion on page five.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council? If there's no further discussion, I'll close the public hearing at 7:08. Is there a motion by the city council?
I move to adopt the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve the annexation and zone change and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the Dallas zoning map to reflect this section.
Okay, and second, any other discussion? We will now vote on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, carried unanimously. Now, since the motion passes, it passes. In order to reflect the city council's decision tonight, it will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within 10 business days. Next item on the agenda is an application for annexation and zone change of property at 1080 West Ellendale Avenue. This is the time set for a land use public hearing on application for the annexation and zone change of property at 1080 West Ellendale Avenue. I will now open the hearing at 7:10. Are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts to declare by the council? This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We will begin with a staff report followed by questions from the council of staff. Thereafter, we will hear from the applicant and/or applicant's representative for a total of 15 minutes. This may be followed by questions of them from the city council. Thereafter, we will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony at this item before the city council. Each person will be provided five minutes to testify. Comments submitted by phone will be taken after in-person comments have been completed. If you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in the staff report or any criteria that you believe should be applicable. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all the testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the city council to deliberate and ask if there's a motion to respond. So will the staff please present their report?
Again, for the record, Chase Willough, city planner. That request, and then zone change, involves a somewhat larger property, 9.2 acres in size. It is also within the low-density residential zone, and it is located behind 1080 West Avenue, which is in the northwest part of town there. Right, the recycling center there on Ellendale. There is a subdivision that's currently under development, and then farther north beyond the subdivision that's being constructed, there is additional land owned by that same property owner, same developer, which is currently outside of city limits, and so they are requesting to have that property be annexed for future development. And so you can see in this aerial photo that it is somewhat isolated, but these photos are somewhat out of date. There is a subdivision constructed immediately to the south of the highlighted area, which will provide streets and utility services to the site. So same six approval criteria for annexations that we discussed with the previous hearing, so I will kind of skip through those pretty quickly. Zone change, again, criteria for that. The one that I'll highlight here a little bit more is that the request has to conform to the transportation planning rule. That's a state law that talks about preserving capacity of the transportation system and as properties are being developed or specifically rezoned. Since this does involve a rezoning, traffic analysis is part of that, and since it's a much larger property, the overall impact on traffic is somewhat larger. And so as part of the analysis that was provided, the applicant included a traffic impact study for the site based on numbers within that. Staff were evaluating a contribution to constructing the intersection improvements at Leavens and Ellendale Avenue. Factors that the transportation planning rule looks at is, does the proposal adversely impact a facility that's already below performance standards? And in this case, that answer would be yes, and so in that situation, mitigation would be called for. So staff do have a recommendation as to mitigation towards that traffic impact. Looking at the, again, the property with the red crescent is the property that is being examined here, and proposed zoning is the RL zone, which again, many of the surrounding properties have that same zoning designations. Seems like a logical expansion of the zoning map in that. City has also requested the adjacent property owners to include a small sub- their property that is currently outside of city limits. With this request, clean up the map and make it a little more orderly, the adjoining property owner has agreed to that request, and so this shows what the final configuration would look like. So back to the approval with condition recommendation. The recommended condition of approval is that the developer enter into a development agreement to pay 3% of the project cost for the Ellendale and Leavens intersection. That would be the calculation of their contribution to that intersection divided by the current trap intersection, so... That's what I have for you here.
Does the city council have any questions of staff? Yes, Steven.
The property to be annexed, does that belong to the same owner as the development that's currently going on directly south of it?
Yes, it's the same developer, same property owner.
So there's a... They're probably going to want to include this in the subdivision that they're currently developing at some point.
Right. When they developed the first phase of their subdivision, they did include provisions for the adjacent parcel. The storm was oversized to accommodate the stormwater from both properties.
So that was probably the intention from the get-go?
Yes.
Okay.
Chase, the traffic impact study had several recommendations that I don't see attached to this as conditions. How do they... How do we make sure that we have those conditions if we were to approve this?
Right. So one of the conditions that was identified in the traffic study was a temporary solution to have the Leavens-Ellendale intersection be converted from a two-way stop to an all-way stop sign. That change has already occurred, and so having that in the conditions wouldn't really be relevant. I think it was also referenced to the Jasper intersection. The city is going to be looking at that a little more closely as part of some other projects, so it wouldn't necessarily be proportionate to have this particular development be responsible for that, just because of the percentage of it would be so low as a proportionate impact.
Not necessarily looking for the developer to be responsible for the cost, but it definitely is a stressed area that we drive, all drive, and recommendation is to do something at those three locations.
Yes. The city does have a proposal in the immediate term for the Leavens-Ellendale intersection in particular. There's a proposal for a traffic signal. I'm sure council is familiar with that project, has heard about that. And so as we look at the overall transportation system, these are other kind of projects that will come up along the way in terms of operational improvements over time.
But nothing for Jasper or Kings Valley?
Not, but that doesn't preclude future improvements as development and as traffic increases. Part of the transportation impact fees that we have, the system development charges, is to pay for some of those off-site citywide, and so that's one of the kind of things that that can pay for, is those kind of capacity improvements, restriping of intersections, those sorts of things.
And where that rubber really hits the road is when they present an actual proposal for development, "I want to build this." That's when you, that's when that stuff comes really under the microscope before you can, before approval is granted for the new development.
Any other questions from the council? So we will now hear from the applicant. As a reminder, you have 15 minutes to present. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Charles Fisher with Lock Engineers Incorporated here in town. Address 289 East Ellendale Avenue. I don't have too much to add with respect to the annexation itself, but I did want to go into a little bit of detail about the recommended condition of approval. The condition requiring the payment of a fee to mitigate significant effect of the proposed zone change first came to our attention the day before the Planning Commission meeting. The proportionate share calculation that staff chose is simply the ratio of the AM trips generated by the proposed development to the AM peak hour trips. That value that was used for the AM peak hour trips was from June 317, and we obviously did not have sufficient time between learning about that calculation and the meeting to prepare an up... Subsequent to the Planning Commission meeting, we did have that update performed, and the results of which are in your packets tonight, as well as the reflected 3.1% value of the intersection, Ellendale. That was different than what was commissioned and approved at that point, and that's really all I've got to say.
Does the city council have any questions of the applicant?
Given the difference, would be the, and I know this is future-oriented stuff, we don't have a development proposal in front of us, but ballpark, what would be the impact on the developer, given the difference between those two numbers?
The estimates that I've heard for that intersection have been somewhere around $2.5 million. So, you know, 1% is sizable.
Any other questions?
But I would assume the applicant's in favor.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, public testimony will now be allowed. Please state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes to testify, and we will alert you when you have 30 seconds remaining. At the five-minute mark, your testimony will end. As a reminder, if you will be testifying, please direct your attention, your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in the staff report or any criteria that you believe should be applicable. If you want to speak. Is there anybody waiting on the phone?
No.
Okay, thank you. No need for rebuttal, so we'll go... Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for the staff? If there's no further discussion, I will close the public hearing at 7:22. Is there a motion by the city council?
I would like to ask a question first of staff, just a procedural question. When did this come before the Planning Commission?
Before the Planning Commission at their member meeting. And the staff report provided to the Planning Commission packet, which would have that... I regret, I don't have that.
Is there a motion by the council?
I move to recommend that the city council approve the annexation of the subject property and approve the zone change to residential low density...
Nancy.
Wrong one.
Page 21.
I knew it. Sorry about that, everybody.
Sounds familiar.
I thought it was, yeah. It's 21.
It's 21.
Oh, nice. Just learned how to handle it.
And the good thing, it's the only number page.
And this is a serious time, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought it was meeting, didn't sound like...
Thanks a lot, guys. Excuse me, they all let me fall in the hole. Okay, there it is. All right. I move to adopt the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve the annexation and the zone change and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the Dallas zoning map to reflect this action on the condition that the developer shall enter into a development agreement to pay 3.1% of the total project cost to improve the intersection of Ellendale and Leavens in such a way as to mitigate the significant effect of the proposed zone change.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? So we will now, I'm not going to restate the entire motion, but all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. In order to reflect the city council's decision tonight, it will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within 10 business days. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is public comment. You have three minutes to talk to the council, talk to me, and please state your name and It's our turn to listen to you, and we will listen to you for those three minutes. We will notify you of two and a half minutes. So the first one on the list is Ann Hurd.
Good evening, Mayor Ann Hurd. I'm Ann Hurd, 623 Southwest Hader Street here in Dallas, and I'm president of Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center. And your agenda first report, you kind of talked about splash pad. Well, when we formed five years ago, we had, you know, just gigantic, wonderful ideas. One of them was to put a splash pad right outside to the west of the aquatic center out of the party rooms, until we found out it was going to cost, like, back then, $225,000. And we wanted to have garage doors that on that glass side of the party room, so, you know, you could open it up and have people come in and out and go back and forth and so forth. Those were going to be like $30,000 apiece or something, so we let that go pretty quickly. I really liked the idea of having it at the John Barnard Park, because that would give them another water feature that would really be used in the summertime, for sure. Also, hundreds of people that use insurance to pay their pool fees, which is wonderful for so many seniors that just can't really afford it. There are a lot of people, though, that do use that, and after talking to them, they're more than happy, because they swim free, to make a tax-deductible donation to the aquatic center. So, and they do that every year, so that's really nice. The next live show class is going to be the first part in November. Gretchen already has two people signed up for it, but she needs five, so she's hoping to get three more people to sign up for that class. And one thing you probably don't know about, you know that flashing crosswalk that's off of Fenton or whatever street that is, that's right by the high school? Around 11:30 every day, weekday, high school can stream over to the aquatic center. Sometimes there's 50 of them there getting lunch, and, oh, they have so wonderful choices, pizza slices and pork dogs and popcorn, chips and ice cream, but it makes a lot of money for the aquatic center, because, you know, the market by concession is like 100%, so that's really goo... Oh, and they love slushies, too. The other thing I was going to tell you, as with our fundraising that we have going on now, we need $12,000 more dollars of the $15,000, that's our goal, to put in those sand filters for the therapy and the lap pool, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is... Okay, next is Robert Greenway.
Good evening, Robert Greenway, 223 Southeast Academy Street. Been going on eight months since I've been in this town, and still haven't got any answers from anybody about anything, positive or negative. The two words of the day that pertain to this meeting here is ignorant and fool, lacking knowledge or understanding about certain things. Fool, person acts unwisely, person who is duped, stupid person who lacks judgment or common sense, weak minded or idiotic person. Kind of hits, you know, when you have somebody that's supposed to be running the city who can't answer simple questions that have been brought to them for the past eight or nine months, or certain managerial things that basically lie to the common people, and think they can get away with it, have certain things coming. I plan on being around here a long time, I'm not going anywhere, and answers need to be held. Somebody needs to be held accountable for certain things that are going on. I've mentioned quite a few things, never heard anything from anybody, you know. If somebody wants to debate it or talk about it, let's do it. Let's have us sitting here to talk about the things that I've talked about and brought up that don't make sense, that are screwing the people of this city, and make something of it. And then also, my last thing to say is kudos to our mayor for sticking with his three minute thing for no ab reason, except that he thinks that he is better than all of us, and he can make a unilateral decision without any reason, except that he can do it, and he wants to, because the criteria is five minutes. He one time told me here, he challenged me, and said that the city council had changed it, which they have. So, I don't know what you're still doing up there. You should be like Biden. Time to move on. Thank you, sirs.
Thank you. Okay, next is the consent agenda, and the items on that is approval of the October 7th, 2024 work session minutes, approval of the October 7th, 2024 city council meeting minutes, and the September 2024 financial report. Do you think you want to leave on the consent agenda, or take off the consent agenda? Yes.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No items removed from the agenda. Reports or comments from the mayor and council members. Yes, sir.
It's that time of year, your favorite time of year. It's the city manager review time. And as such, they will be going out this week, is that right? And the city manager will be submitting his on the 30th, which is Thursday of next week. Correct?
I, yeah, roughly.
And then Nancy and I quickly met, because Nancy and I, Larry has shifted his duties over to Nancy now. And Nancy and I were getting and consolidating all of them. And if we could get all those city manager evaluations back by November 15, that's a Friday.
And we'll have them today?
I'll send them out this week.
Electronically?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I got to say.
I've got something. I went up to the Aaron Mercer Reservoir last week, rode up there with Jake. And the purpose was to check on the, not check, but just to look at that splash pad that I, the river's kind of near and dear to me and all of us. And I kind of wanted to see the construction and how it was built. It was kind of cool to see all that. It's all done. It's all ready to go. And I'm happy to report that the dam is about half full. I think it's at its lowest point. So, we made it through another year without having rationed any water. But anyway.
The splash pad is for the fish?
Yes, for the fish. When they fall off the top of the dam, they made they made a series of pools. So they didn't, instead of falling 50 feet, they would fall 40 feet at a time.
And into water.
Into water.
Right.
They're much happier.
Or they will be when the dam is full, yeah.
Yeah. Free.
Well, I can't speak for the city manager, but we both attended the League of Oregon Cities conferences last week. It was a good conference, a lot of repetition and stuff, but not a chance to network and talk with other mayors and other councilors and other city managers. So it was a good, good, good conference. But everybody has the same problems.
Small town America.
Anything else from anybody? Is there any questions? Reports from the city manager and staff.
So the first item I have is a Fleet Services IGA with the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron. As you guys all know, our fleet does a lot of work for other entities. So I'm going to turn this time over to Gary, so he can present his report.
Good evening. It's lovely to be here tonight. So, over the last, well, I've been here about five years now, and we've been continually working to improve our fleet services and get it up to a point where it's a true benefit and an offset to the expense of our internal fleet needs. We've made some great strides in that direction. One of the things we're trying to do is to build our IGA customer list. And so that's what we're talking about tonight. We were recently approached by a representative of the Grand Ron Tribes, saying that they had an interest in having us do maintenance on some of their fire apparatus, specifically four engines, three and two water tenders, so nine vehicles. We feel like that's a, add to our, our, our scope of work right now, given our staff. So this, this is a very welcome addition to what we're doing and the goals that we want to try to meet. So, the agreement is in your packet. The tribes have already signed the agreement. It has been reviewed by Lane and approved as deformed by him. So, questions, I'd be happy.
It's probably, excuse me, Brandon, I missed it. But what does the revenue you anticipate from this?
Well, I don't think that's something we can put our finger on right now, not knowing, you know, the condition of their units and so forth. I can tell you that we'll be making $130 an hour plus our parts policy, which we have a markup on parts to cover certain expenses within our operations. I can tell you that it will be beneficial to what we're trying to do with our fleet services. But having a number right now, I really don't know.
I'm not trying to pin you down. Could you have an idea of like a floor and ceiling, an area where it would likely be? If not.
I really don't.
Okay, no, good enough. I can pat out.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I, I don't know, I don't know the condition of the vehicles, and, and, you know, the types of repairs that might be needed, if they've been maintained well or not up to this point. That all bears significantly on what we might need to do with.
As I said, I'm not trying to pin you down. I just, with nine vehicles, it's got to be significant.
It is. Whatever that number is, it is.
Gary, you said $30 an hour?
Hundred, 100.
Oh, 130, okay.
100.
Need to continue.
And I'll tell you where we've come from. Five years ago, we were at $75.
Right.
And I can guarantee you at that, we were not meeting, we were paying more than we were taking.
I was just wondering how that compared to.
Yeah, no, very well. And we've had a series of increases in our hourly rate each year, trying not to price ourselves out of our market with our IGA partners. So far, we've done pretty well, because we're growing, and we're taking on additional partners at this point.
Well, and that's five years ago, that's pre pandemic. So this sounds at least reasonable.
And it also helps that we have amazing mechanics. I mean, our fleet department is pretty spectacular.
And then the parts, that's just at our cost, aren't we making anything off of the parts?
Yeah, our parts policy, actually, I'll just share with you, our parts policy is for $500, costing up to $500. We charge them 1.5 times. And the 0.5 is for our, you know, ordering parts and running them down and finding them, it can be quite time intensive. And part of that 0.5 also goes to overhead with our, our fleet supervisor. But then parts over $500, what we do is we charge that 1.5 up to 500, and any amount over is 1.2. And the reason for that is we have to replace someone's engine, and we're going to tack on half of the cost of the engine. That gets to be really draconian for the customer and hard for us to justify. But anyway, yeah, that parts policy is working well for us. I think this is the second year that we're implementing that.
Thank you.
Michael?
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the intergovernmental agreement with the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron for Fleet Services.
Second.
Do you have a question?
Yes. Do we still have an agreement fixed on vehicles or service moment vehicles?
Yes, we do. It's an ongoing relationship.
Our Dallas vehicle, do we have priority over the other two?
Yes, if we needed to pull it, yeah. I don't believe we often do.
Any other questions? Motion has been made. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Curried unanimously. Is there another one?
Yep. The next item is Americans with Disabilities Act for ramp project agreement with the state of Oregon. And that's Gary again.
Hi. So, this one, you may be aware that state of Oregon through ODOT is a BAP project to replace and build where they don't exist ADA ramps, all along their state highways within the city limits. There will be 28 work sites involved, and we tried to count up how many ramps, and going page through page of the plan set, and it got to be too mind numbing. There's probably somewhere between 80 to 100 ramps involved. So it's a significant project. The state is estimating, brace yourself, $10 million for this project. So, a significant project. That's just in town. They're also doing some work over in the Rickoryall area, under their same project. But, so they've presented to us an agreement that basically says that we will have a chance to review their plans, which we're doing, that, right, to work in our right of way to perform the project. And then when it's all done, we have, we, the city, have maintenance responsibility for the ramp. We've been maintaining sidewalks and ramps along the state highway where, for a very long time. So, and then on their side, what they will be doing is they will be paying for the project. They will be bidding it, contracting it. This is their project. We'll probably have minimal interface when there are conflicts with our infrastructure. I anticipate that, I think there's just a few out there that our crews will be involved in. So, I did have Lane review the agreement. He shot back, yeah, looks like they're standard agreement. He didn't have any issues with it. I was okay with what they're asking for, and I am. So if you have any questions?
This is the, the court ordered work they're doing that we discussed two weeks ago.
The what?
At our work session.
I wasn't at that work session. Again.
Yes, it is.
Same thing, okay.
I thought we were.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
That was the easy.
Yes.
That was the, that was the DQ.
Washington and Maine, wasn't it?
This is different.
Well, that was a piece. As I understand.
Yeah, they needed, or specific places for this project. So, but, yeah, that was a small piece of this bigger project. Out of all of this, only two places needed easements. Yeah, got you.
Any other questions? You obtain a motion?
Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to sign the intergovernmental agreement establishing terms for the Oregon Department of Transportation to build ADA ramps on state highways within the city limits of Dallas.
Second. Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Curried unanimously. First reading of ordinance is ordinance number 1900.
Ordinance number 1900, an ordinance relating to illegal stormwater discharges and illicit stormwater conveyance, and adding new provisions to chapter six of the Dallas City Code. We will note that that should actually be chapter four, not chapter six, will be made before the second reading at the next council. And so this ordinance is, is part of the DEQ's approval of our TMDL implementation plan that requires an ordinance prohibiting non-stormwater discharges to our stormwater conveyance system, and has been under discussion for many, many months.
Discussion. Okay. We'll move on. Second reading of ordinances, ordinance number 1898.
Give me a second to find it. Ordinance number 1898, an ordinance amending Dallas City Code, section 6.500, 6.505, 6.525, and 6.532, and adding new provisions relating to non-compliant vehicles. And what this ordinance does, it changes the abandoned vehicle definition to fit more circumstances, a broader definition of non-compliant vehicles to help code services address issues.
Any other discussion? Secretary Callroll?
Counsel Barrett?
Yes.
Counsel Barrett?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counsel Chance?
Yes.
Counsel Shane?
Yes.
Counsel President Schilling?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Passes 70-0.
Ordinance is passed, 1899 is passed unanimous. Any other discussion tonight? Well, I've got about a 30 minute speech, but I'm not going to do it.